Hey, Wasixx, where are ya?
What? Here ya... I'm awake. I wasn't napping. No time to rest, slack jaws.
Stop lunging off!
Oh ho ho! Here they come!
This is too easy! Hey, they were right here!
You know the drill, be on guard.
I failed. I hear Ratty can't work. Give the Gunner's a moving target! Incoming rattling fire! He wants the dwarf dead for sure! Look! The rattling gunner will target the dwarf! Yes, he sure did! That rattling gun, I've lost kin to those things! Enjoy this calm, Dory. It won't last. No more shooting for that rattling! Bomb here!
Get ready. Oh ho ho! Here they come!
Crum is magic and glob at the air! Dory, have you wandered off? Grimnir's beard, gas! Gas rat! Pick up your feet, move! Did you hear that? Hail, hell, my globadere! Gas! Train carefully. I hear a runner. It's a strangler. Don't let it grab ya! Test your hook against my axe, would ya? Look out! Gas! Crook, a gas rat! Sagi, kill it! Kill it now! Move, gas! Gas rat! Hail, hell, my globadere!
Didn't fall asleep, so you weren't terrible, I guess. Supplies for you lot!
Sagi, kill that runner!
Here they come.
Give the Gunner's a moving target! Got a runner! See, an assassin longs to feel my axe! One less assassin to worry about! It's firing! Get clear! The rattling gunner knows I'm the biggest threat! Couldn't hit that side of a mountain! The gunner is tracking me! Go on to your pace! Sagaraki black fur head! Rattling gun, task to do. Couldn't hit that side of a mountain! The rattling gunner will target the dwarf! Yes, he sure did! Want to die in a hail of warp shot? Black rat, kill that scruff! I'm not giving up now! Look, that rattling's about to fire! Yes, rattling gun, now tell sounds like that! Rattling gunner knows I'm the biggest threat! Get around ya, don't face it head on! That gas rat needs to die! Crook, a gas rat! Get out of here! Sagaraki black fur head! The craftsman needs only one shot, Ratty! Hail, hell, my globadere! Can't yet kill. Yes, rattling gun, now tell sounds like that! The gunner is tracking me! Keep up, Tringberazi! Look, that rattling's about to fire! Incoming rattling fire! He wants the dwarf dead for sure! More ammunition here! Get around ya, don't face it head on! The rattling gun, I've lost kin to those things!
You hear that? Oh ho ho! Here they come!
There can be no rest for us. Not yet. Come out, doglinger! Look, one of them black rats! I know where I am, do they? Black fur! Soul vermin! Blacky black fur! Soul vermin! That black rat's mine! Grimnir's bones and other black fur! Sagaraki black fur head! That black rat's mine! It's firing! Get clear! Want to die in a hail of warp shot? The craftsman needs only one shot, Ratty! Grimnir's belt, the rattling's dead! Black fur! Gas! Kill that gas rat! Blacky black fur! Grimnir's beard, gas! We're almost there! Look, one of them black rats! That gas rat needs to die! Get out of here! Gas rat's dead!
Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over.
They have a cogrey! Pick up your feet, move! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Look out! Gas! Move, gas! Ratogga, we'll slaughter the brute! Gas rat! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! It'll take some killing, that will! Kill that gas rat! A cogrey! It'll take some killing, that will! Ratogga, we'll slaughter the brute! Ratogga, they're quicker than they look! They have a cogrey! Kill that gas rat! Ratogga, they're quicker than they look! They have a cogrey! Ratogga, we'll slaughter the brute! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Take some killing, that will! A cogrey! A cogrey! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Come on, cogrey, have a present for ya! Don't falter! Keep moving, Dory! You see, that's fine as twerp, even if I do say so myself! It's not bug bones, I'll tell you that! I smell some ammunition!
No rest for the wicked. Stay ready.
There's a rattling nearby, but I'm an elf. Crook, a gas rat! Gas! Hail, hell, my globadere! Pick up your feet, move! One less rattling gun! Come on! Crook, a gas rat! Crum is magic and glob at the air! Move, gas! Look out! Gas! Gas rat! Get out of here! Grimnir's beard, gas! Black rat, kill that scruff! Move, gas! Look out! Gas! Crook, a gas rat! Gas rat! Pick up your feet, move! Got a runner! Grimnir's beard, gas! Pick up your feet, Tringberazi! Hail, hell, my globadere! Gas! Get out of here! That black rat's mine! Move, gas! Get out of here! Gas rat! Grimnir's bones and other black fur! That gas rat needs to die! Black fur!
Taking victory, huh? Enjoy it while it lasts.
Crook, a gas rat!
Any second now. Oh ho ho! Here they come!
Test your hook against my axe, would ya? The strangler dies, now! Watch your backsides, I'm throwing a bomb! Come on, rattling gun, task to do. Give the Gunner's a moving target! The gunner is tracking me! I'm not giving up now! Incoming rattling fire! He wants the dwarf dead for sure! The rattling gun, I've lost kin to those things! The rattling gunner will target the dwarf! Yes, he sure did! Crook, assassin! The rattling gunner knows I'm the biggest threat! That rattling's about to fire! Get around ya, don't face it head on! The gunner is tracking me! Hail, hell, my globadere! The rattling gunner knows I'm the biggest threat! Grimnir's beard, gas! Incoming rattling fire! He wants the dwarf dead for sure!
Want to bet for how long?
Medical supplies!
Supplies are here, whether you deserve them or not.
Hey, Wasixx, where are ya?
Oh ho ho! Here they come!
There's movement in the shadows. Rattling gun, task to do. The rattling gun, I've lost kin to those things! The rattling gunner will target the dwarf! Yes, he sure did! The rattling gunner knows I'm the biggest threat! Get around ya, don't face it head on! Incoming rattling fire! He wants the dwarf dead for sure! Yes, rattling gun, now tell sounds like that! The rattling gunner died! Couldn't hit that side of a mountain! The rattling gunner will target the dwarf! Yes, he sure did! Keep up, Tringberazi! Want to die in a hail of warp shot? The craftsman needs only one shot, Ratty! The rattling gunner died!
Any second now.
Yes, rattling gun, now tell sounds like that! The Sagaraki won't be far. Keep watch. Oh, blacky black fur! Give the Gunner's a moving target! Couldn't hit that side of a mountain! Grimnir's bones and other black fur! Soul vermin! Blackrat, kill that scruff! Black fur! Sagaraki black fur ahead! Hey, they were right here! Grimnir's bones and other black fur! I'm throwing a bomb! One of them black rats! That black rat's mine! Blacky black fur! Blackrat, kill that scruff! A lion's helm, a globber deer! Worthless crackpads! That gas rat needs to die! Look out, gas! Pick up your feet, move! We're almost there! Gas! Potion, don't waste it! Pick up your feet, move!
Stay ready!
Ammunition here! The strangler dies, now! We got a strangler! Smash that toy, kill the strangler! It's not long enough!
I wasn't napping.
Potion here!
Supplies have arrived.
Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! Grimnir's magic and globber deer! It'll take some killing, that will! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! They have a cogrey! That cogrey! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! The beast sounds hungry, let it taste steel! They have a cogrey! What a brute, pack it to pieces! That cogrey! It'll take some killing, that will! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! They have a cogrey! That cogrey! They have a cogrey! That cogrey! What a brute, pack it to pieces! It'll take some killing, that will! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! Come, that cogrey, I have a present for ya! It'll take some killing, that will! Take some killing, that will! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! What a brute, pack it to pieces! They have a cogrey! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! That cogrey! They have a cogrey! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! That cogrey! They have a cogrey! Keep moving, Dory! Take some killing, that will! What a brute, pack it to pieces! That cogrey! It'll take some killing, that will! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! What a brute, pack it to pieces! They have a cogrey! Don't falter! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! What a brute, pack it to pieces! They have a cogrey! That cogrey! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! What a brute, pack it to pieces! They have a cogrey! It'll take some killing, that will! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! It'll take some killing, that will! They have a cogrey! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! What a brute, pack it to pieces! That cogrey! What a brute, pack it to pieces! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! That cogrey! I know where I am, delay!
Witness to something really special today, and it makes me feel weird. Is this how being proud of fools like him feels like?